I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Elementary School District to order. The record shows that our forum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to start the live agenda. Motion made by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Linda. All four. Seven oh. All four at this time.
God, we come to you tonight, first of all, asking for wisdom. And we're very grateful for air conditioning and grateful for the good weather that we've had today. Thank you, Lord, for watching over us over our students. Pray for those that have had some misfortunes here lately, Lord, and especially, God, right now. Pray for those in Israel. Want to lift up my friend Emily, this is one of our Mount Vernon people that's there right now, God. We're here talking about school business and sports and band and good stuff we've got going on here, God. She's over there in the line of fire, Lord. We pray that you protect her and many people that are over there and all that stuff. And thank you, God, for this country, America, that we live in. Bless this school. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's do our pledges. Our pledge is to provide every United States with a and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge is to see the face of one nation under God, indivisible. Mind you, if I turn your cell phones off, it's a very important thing.
Yep, that'd be a reminder for us to turn them off down.
All right, Dr. McCullough, do we have any special recognition?
Yes, sir, we do. It's time to take the opportunity to do our Teacher and Staff Members of the Month. We will start with our Elementary Teacher of the Month. If I could have Ms. Carissa Brophy to come forward, please. She is our October. Has something written about her, says compared to all other factors, teachers have the most significant impact on student success, and Ms. Brophy is no exception. She brings her best to school every day. At the beginning of this school year, Ms. Brophy stepped up, not only prepared her classroom, but also another teacher's classroom in her absence. She helped make sure the substitute teacher had everything she needed daily to set our students up for success. This truly encompasses who Carissa is. She is a leader always willing to serve others. Along with her strong work ethic, she's collaborative instructional leader for the first grade team in the entire elementary campus. She prepares engaging lessons for her students and works diligently to make instruction aligned. Her excellent classroom management assists her in maintaining an inclusive, safe, and welcoming environment that supports the learning for all students. Every parent comments on her superior communication skills and efforts to include them in their students' education. Ms. Brophy is committed to professional growth and is always seeking new ideas to strengthen her practice while also serving on many committees to help support the improvement of our campus. Ms. Brophy also mentored many new teachers on her campus as a part of the mentor program, and her mentees are always thankful for the guidance and support she provides. Most importantly, Ms. Brophy gives her students the best gift of all. She believes in them. She never gives up on the student who is struggling or in one who is having difficulty regulating his or her behavior. She meets her students right where they are, loving and challenging them, and all to start to believe in themselves. Ms. Brophy is a difference maker, and we are proud she chooses Mount Vernon Elementary School. Our October Elementary Teacher of the Month, Ms. Carissa Brophy.
I'd like to get all the ones together, if I may, when they're finished.
We will. Jessica, you can take one.
Sorry. Not you. So sorry. Great.
Want to say anything?
Thank you for being honored as the opportunity to work with the students here.
Glad you're here. Next, if I could have Ms. Alicia Butler step forward, please. Ms. Butler is our Middle School Teacher of the Month for October. All right, it says, Ms. Butler is our amazing new eighth-grade math teacher at the middle school. She has been in education for five years and demonstrates a love and passion for student education. Although Alicia has only been with us a short time, we feel she has been a part of our team much longer. She quickly dove in lending her enthusiasm and support to everyone. Alicia comes each day with a desire for success and is willing to assist wherever there is a need. She is timely, dependable, positive, and up for every challenge presented to her. Alicia has a thirst for personal growth that distinguishes her as a caring and thoughtful teacher. We can count on Alicia to be prepared and deliberate in her instructional planning as well as her dedication to duty and student success. She endeavors to create effective math lessons which stimulate the mind and address the many learning styles of her students while motivating and challenging students to reach and attain higher expectations. Alicia Butler also takes time to build relationships with her students while supplying a supportive and energetic environment. She has delivered and maintained an instructor-friendly classroom. Each day, she greets her students as they enter her classroom with a warm and welcoming smile while encouraging each one to promptly begin the daily task. We are very blessed to have Ms. Butler as a valuable team member of the Mount Vernon Middle School family. October Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Butler. Want to say anything?
Thank you so much, just such a real thing. I feel so welcome, God, Mount Vernon. Thank you.
Glad you're here. Next is our High School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Casey Woods. Says it's only her second year at Mount Vernon High School. Ms. Woods has proven to be a wonderful talent in addition to her ELA department at the high school. She has a strong educational background in multiple disciplines in addition to ELA, thus making her a perfect fit for our dual-credit English program and helping prepare students for life after high school. Ms. Woods not only teaches dual-credit, but also sophomore-level regular and honors ELA courses. She takes great pride in being prepared on a daily basis and optimizing the time she has with students. Students in her classes are challenged to think critically and actively read while combining those skills into their writing. She takes seriously the idea of instructional rigor in developing critical thinking skills with her students. Ms. Woods uses a variety of teaching strategies to keep students engaged at all times. She works hard to develop quality relationships with her students, but also holds them accountable to their own obligations in the classroom. Ms. Woods is a great colleague and works collaboratively with those in her department to plan high-quality lessons that engage students while serving as the department leader for high school ELA. She is always conscientious of fulfilling all her professional obligations in a timely and efficient manner and can be relied upon to help in whatever way is necessary. Ms. Woods has brought a wealth of experience and fresh ideas to the school and has genuine desire to grow her department. We are blessed that Ms. Woods has chosen Mount Vernon High School. We are grateful for all her contributions to our school community. Ms. Woods is more than deserving to be recognized as Mount Vernon High School Teacher of the Month. Say anything?
Thank you. I feel really supported by the administration here in the community.
Very good. Now, our Support Staff for the month of October, I could have Ms. Joanne Rodriguez. Says Ms. Rodriguez is an educational aide for the middle school and has been with the district for five years. She provides valuable support to our teachers, staff, and students in a variety of ways, including instructional support, language translation, and student encouragement. Joanne can be counted on to assist students with their assignments in class and understands the importance of building relationships while teaching appropriate social skills as well. We can always count on Joanne to step in to assist in translating to both students and parents whenever additional communication is needed. She is always available to help in any capacity and a willing and reliable team member. We are very grateful to have Joanne Rodriguez as a member of our Mount Vernon Middle School team. Congratulations. And we have the Great Teachers of the Month come back up, please. We'll get them to meet with all of you. Ms. Bear, get his chair.
Shift that way.
His chair.
Yeah, there we go. That would be everybody's. One, two, three. It's the OCD that's working here. Hang on. Go ahead. You get yours. I got one more.
Hold on. Hold on. So sorry.
You got that in there, Jessica?
Yes. Got it. Thank you very much.
One more. No, there we go. There you go. One, two, three. There it goes.
Tara, did that work for your microphone? Is that gonna be okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes. Couple of comments this evening. We're gonna start with Mr. Mars. Billy Mars.
Yes, sir. We have board policy on this. I'm guessing if you're signed up to speak, you've read the policy on this. We're gonna give you five minutes. Guess we've had time, we've had to break it down a little bit, but we just have three more. You can't, just kind of for y'all that are speaking, you can't call anybody out by name.
Got you.
I'm Billy Mars. I graduated from here in 2003. Ms. Bear, most of the guys here, I know you. Ninety-eight percent of you in here know me. I just wanted to give this to the board and let y'all be aware of the situation. And you hand that out to them. I appreciate y'all to look at it, and y'all can take care of it how y'all want to. I'd like to stay, but I've got a flag football game. I've gotta go coach. So duty calls, if you know what I mean. Thank y'all. I appreciate y'all for letting me speak.
Okay, thanks, Cory. All right, next, Ms. Summerlin, Crystal.
All righty. Are you ready? For those that don't know me, my name is Crystal Summerlin. I've been a part of the Mount Vernon community for 20 years and hands-on involved with MBISD for 11 and a half years. I can remember when you once had to read the obituary to know when to apply for a job here. No one ever left. Every educator wanted to come work here, and it was once the school everyone wanted their kids at. It seems over the last few years, I have watched MB start to go downhill. Our good teachers and coaches are leaving as fast as they can. The ones we have left seem to be hanging on by a thread. I can't help but wonder what's going on inside of our school district. I've recently reached out to a few who have left and some who are still current, and it seems that one of the common issues is working under our Assistant Superintendent. I did some research to see how long she's been with our district and where she came from. A quick Google search told me that four years ago, she was fired or non-renewed from North Lamar ISD, and MBISD picked her right up. I've contacted people.
Summerlin, you can't call a physician out.
Associated with North Lamar, and after four years, they're still trying to rebuild their district from her leadership. I've been told she creates a hostile work environment. If you're in her, if you are not in her circle, she will make you miserable. I have to question why in the world we would want someone like this working within our district. I recently learned that she walked out our local law enforcement and first responders from our school buildings. With a call to our sheriff, I was able to confirm that this is true, and they no longer have access to our buildings. According to TEA, they should have access. How does this help create a safe environment for our kids and staff, and why is she being allowed to make these decisions?
That's a fourth time that you've called the same person out, so I've got to stop you.
Well, we'll finish right there.
Right, we'll finish right there.
I didn't say any names.
You called the physician out. You said she about three times, so we know what you're saying. I'm sorry. Next, we have Henry.
Excuse me, walking in front. I've lived here for a long time, and I know most everybody in Mount Vernon did it one time. I'm up here today to talk about freshman and JV football. It is a disgrace to Mount Vernon. We show up at Wimbers last Thursday. Our freshmen and our JVs are combined. Wimbers freshman team is playing a team out of Tyler. Why? Why do we not send our freshmen to play their freshmen? We're right down the road. Sixteen miles. I don't understand it. And that's not the only time. We've combined just about every game. I think we've had two games this year that the JV and the freshmen have not been combined. That's 48 to 50 people. You can't get no playing time. But JV is what you gotta depend on for next year. And we won't even let them have a full playing game. I don't understand that. And I don't know if y'all are aware of it or not. Monday, they watch film. Tuesday, they're the blocking dummies for the varsity. Wednesday, they practice 10 to 15 minutes. Thursday, they play. How are they gonna learn anything? I don't understand that. Last week, we played our biggest rival in our district, Wimbers. They did not run one offensive play in practice as a team. I don't understand. I'm not calling nobody names. I just flat don't understand. That's all I got to say. No, that's not all I got to say. We've got a coach on the JV team that likes to holler and scream at people on the sidelines for them not knowing what they're supposed to be doing. How in the world are they supposed to know with that kind of practice schedule? It don't make no sense to me. And I'm telling you, I can get frustrated over it real quick, and I got a grandson on the team. I'm through.
Okay, next item. Item four, consider approval of consent agenda. Have y'all looked over the consent agenda? Any questions on that? If we don't have any questions on the consent agenda, any motion that we approve that as presented? That's made by Robert. Seconded by Tal. Any further questions? All four. Seven oh. Moving on to our action items here. First item on the action items, item A, consider adopting MBISD resolution approving the investment policy strategies and investment officer training. Greg, you got that one?
I know. Easy, simple. Just because there are no changes as the attachments were on the board agenda. It's our local policy and our legal policy. There were no changes to that in any way. We have to have a resolution that you've looked at it and approved it, and that's just, it's got that to sign after the, you know, going to close session and everything like that. Other than that, it's to make sure that the investment officers also have their training. Dr. McCullough's got his training, and I've got my training for this year, so.
So for transparency, who are our investment officers?
Dr. McCullough and myself.
Okay.
They are. You have to have eight to 10 hours every two years, or four to five hours every year. Dr. McCullough got both two years out of the way, and I got one year out of the way, so I take mine yearly. So other than that, that's.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions on Ms. Kramer? Our investment officer, Kramer? Okay. At this time, I make a motion that we adopt the MBISD resolution approving the investment policy strategies and investment officer training. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda. Any further questions? All four. Seven oh, moving on. Item B, consider approval of D E C local policy update for mental health leave and line of duty leave for school district police officers in accordance with House Bill 1486 and House Bill 471.
Okay, in your board book, you have the proposed revisions that we received from TASB Policy Services. It actually, she indicated page five. It actually starts on page four of that attachment. Part of legislative session allocated mental health leave for local law enforcement. We have set up a maximum of 10 days of mental health leave per traumatic event. So in the case that there is a situation, part of that legislative update is we do have to create regulations on how we oversee that. So that is under the superintendent's regulations for that. We did not extend any line of duty injury leave of absence because we do have assault leave in place. We also have extended sick leave for that, and then it also tags onto the mental health leave. So if there is a line of duty injury, we can actually utilize that 10 days as part of that as well. So I'm asking for approval of that.
Any further questions on that? All right, at this time, I need to motion that we approve the local policy for mental health leave and line of duty leave.
I make the motion.
Definitely by Scott. Next one.
Second.
By Linda. Any further questions for Ms. Y on that? All four. That's seven to zero. Item C, consider approval of EIC local policy revision regarding high school courses retaken after passing grade.
So in this last legislative session, they allowed parents to have the option to request for retention. Before, that used to be with a retention committee. And so now kindergarten through eighth grade, parents do have that option to request retention. With that, with parents of high school students, they have the option to request a grade or a course retake. But in that law, there is a caveat that it doesn't say anything about passing or not passing. And so TASB Policy Services has recommended that if we do not want to count a second attempt, I call this a loophole for GPA calculation game, that we do not have to take that second attempt to go into GPA class rank calculation. So the original grade, if it was a passing grade, stays in place. We do not take that second grade in, if it's passing only. If a student takes it for failure, of course, we would consider that grade. So we've actually made that little revision. You know, clarification on that area. So if a parent requests, say a student, so say a student makes an 82 in an honors English class. A parent could say, you know what? We don't think that, we think our student can do better. We want the student to retake that English honors class, and the student makes a 92 in the class. So what we can say is based on that original passing grade, that we would hold that one for your GPA and class rank assignment. But any parent obviously can request a student to retake a course if they would like. But it does not impact GPA and class rank because then you're going to have a lot of parents working the.
And some won't have a chance to take the second.
Correct. So to avoid that, a lot of the recommendation from TASB was to make sure that you have something in policy to regulate parents abusing that. So that's what that is indicated in.
I guess I've never thought about that. I guess you can do that in college, but you're not worried about class rank in college, so.
Right.
Is that very common?
We don't know because it's, this is our first year that parents have the option to request it. So we're trying to be strategic and stay ahead of the issue.
Okay. Any more questions for Ms. Y on this EIC local policy revision regarding high school courses retaken after a passing grade? So your first passing grade is what you're gonna get?
For your GPA and class rank purposes only.
So in my mind, so I'm thinking, why would you retake it?
If we have this policy in place, I'm hoping that wouldn't be the option. Most of the reason that you would want to retake it would be a parent that is wanting a higher grade, and it could be maybe a college-level reason, maybe a student is needing, I'm thinking, for example, an AP exam. MIT normally will take a four or five, depending on the exam, but they won't take a three. So a student would have the ability to take an AP exam again, obviously, because they're trying to be admitted to MIT for that or to get credit for that exam so they don't have to take that course at MIT. That would be an example of why they would. Because normally, if you've already passed it, you've passed it for graduation requirements. So there would be no reason that you would want to retake it unless you're trying to increase your grade for GPA and class rank purposes, or if you're doing it for content purposes. So a student that made, say, for example, a 72, and a parent felt, gosh, I really feel like they need to retake it. They really struggled in this class. This is algebra one. You know, they're gonna be going into algebra two. Their college family really wants them to take this class again for content purposes.
Okay. So it's pretty much saying we're just, that one time, is you're gonna be, your grades are bigger than GPA?
Right, if you have a passing grade, yes.
I guess. Is it a motion that we?
Take a motion.
Whatever. I just read here. Yeah. Adopt the policy.
Adopt the policy.
Okay. Linda makes that motion?
I'll second.
Tal seconds. Is there any other discussion? All right. All for that one? Seven oh, so we will go with that. Local policy revision. Consider approval for revision of staff and active duty list for 23 and 24.
Okay, this is actually just wording semantics, but I wanted to make sure that it had board approval. So the very first page in board book is the original where it says before or after-school tutorials structured $30 a session. All we did is clean up that wording where it says tutorials before or after-school structured for $30 an hour to clarify that with how our long day is happening. The other thing that we didn't really have in here was tutorials on non-school-day structured. So if we're bringing students in on Fridays for House School 1416 structured tutorial requirements, we wanted to make sure that we had that clear on, that teachers would make $30 an hour if they come in for that structured tutorial under House School 1416, which replaced House School 4545 in this last legislative session. So those are those students who, based on a failure for star if they trigger the 15-hour requirement or the 30-hour accelerated instruction requirement, because so many of our students are in activities after school, and they're just unable to stay for a longer day. This gives campuses the option to bring in students on Fridays and also for us to compensate our teachers on those Fridays.
Okay. There's just that one.
Yes, sir.
For that school control.
Yes.
Change on that.
Right, that one we just made for its $30 an hour so that it, we didn't want there to be any ambiguities in how that was worded. And then making sure that it was clear that we are paying for any non-school-day structured tutorials. So anytime that we're bringing teachers and students in, that it is not an academic day.
Okay. Any more questions on this staff and active duty list for 23 and 24? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we make this revision. Questionnaire number Robert. I second. All four. Seven oh. Item A, considering possible action to join lawsuit relating to accreditation appeal proceeding against the Texas Education Agency.
Of course, as you know, there is a lawsuit that actually, I think the hearing started today. We spoke, we talked about it a little bit last month about joining. So we have put this on the agenda today. I think the last number I heard was there are 80 districts that are part of this lawsuit that are fighting, or that are lawsuit against TEA in regard to the new accountability that they're working on right now and some issues with the commissioner of not meeting timelines that he was required to meet. So your information's there in the board book. Maximum cost that Mount Vernon would be out would be $5,000 to be a part of this. It shows the billing on there. The total cost will be determined by the total number of districts that are part of the lawsuit, but the maximum that any district should be out would be $5,000 according to the delivery.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I think it's money well spent. Just keep on changing, and our teachers can't keep up. Glad somebody stepped up. Did you say 5,000 MAC? Is it a dollar per student to start?
No, that was, your student ones, this is the main lawsuit. That is by the law firm O'Hanlon, DeMaris, and Castillo. This is a max of $5,000. It's $350 per hour for work performed by firm attorneys at $110. This is a max of $5,000. It's $350 per hour for work performed by firm attorneys and $110 for work performed by firm paralegals. A max of $5,000. It says total fee should not exceed $5,000 total regardless of time billed per district. The other one, the interveners, I think it's larger districts throughout the state that are working with Thompson and Horton Law Firm. Theirs is, I think, I've not seen their paperwork. Call I was on, I heard it was a dollar per student. As I told you, even our attorney, like Powell, he suggested we were gonna be a part of one of these. He would suggest we be part of one.
And this is primarily regarding the star test?
Accountability, yes.
Most of y'all probably heard about this on the radio, which has kind of been a thing for the last 30 days. But especially in, well, in all of our, especially at the elementary, you know, every time you get a test going, they change the rules, they change the regulations, and teachers are trying to just keep up. So we're trying to get things regulated and stopped. I'd like to make that motion when we do this. I'll take a second. Second by Robert. Oh, any other discussion?
Well, I just did clarify too, the whole accountability rating. Like from my understanding, they were changing, schools were not doing anything with their performance structure, but they were literally changing their equation. So states, schools across Texas look like they're doing worse than they are.
Correct.
Turns out after the fact, after the testing, scores are in, then they made the adjustments to go in. Where you know the rules, it's like changing the game or halftime, everyone changes rules. Touchdown's around 20 points.
So optically, they, it looks like we're performing bad when actually we're doing well. So that's what we're saying, like you can't do that, not just the star test.
The what-ifs that come out make it look like there will be districts across the state who will actually, students will have performed better last year, but their accountability could be lower.
Yeah, and that was probably done in the change.
Well, they need the timelines in regard to letting districts know. And even the, even getting the scores back to districts was not done within the timeline set, set and statute.
Any further discussion? All four. Seven oh. I'm gonna consider approval of NBISD track usage guidelines. Dr. Pope.
Well, President, you asked this to be on the agenda. So we have it here. I know that there's been some discussion and consideration regarding the track usage over the last several months. As you know, as we went through construction through the summer, we had it closed and we still have it closed. As superintendent, I felt that was my decision to make. I made that decision for a couple of reasons. One is, especially if we look throughout, we had it closed throughout the summer. Try to pay attention to the safety of our students as we look to safety all throughout. We realize that we have students now, school started, we have students on the football field or on the track, including elementary throughout the day, anywhere from 7:00 AM to about 6:00 PM. And so for us to, we have zero control when the gates are open of how we control people coming to the track when we have students. In October, this month, we've also found out that our buildings, building structures, just like last year, we will have to, we are going through what's called an intruder audit. And so people from either service center, TA, or whoever they've hired, a contractor, will come on a day that we don't know and will try to access one of our buildings to see if we're locked. Now again, they're not looking for the track, but I use that as an example. It's like we're required and we do everything we can to keep our students and staff safe from a building standpoint. And we don't have that on the track here in Dead Town when we have students there, unless those gates are locked when we have kids there. Second part of that is, is also as superintendent, I felt that after our community made a commitment to us, we spent a million and a half dollars to put turf on the football field to try to keep that as nice as it could for as long as we could, knowing also that beforehand, we've had signs up that state that dogs or pets and bicycles are not allowed. And many times, I've had to go over and ask people to remove their pets from the track. And so just from trying to maintain the integrity of what we have and taking care of our investment as well as saving for our kids, that's why I made the recommendation and that's why I told our folks to lock.
So what we'll do is on this, if we'll, we'll take a motion in a second. And if we get a motion that we, as of right now, it's closed. If we have a motion that it stays open, then we get a second. Which is, we'd be to take other, other discussion.
Wait, when are we making a motion?
We, we just have to take, regarding the track, as of right now, it's closed, right?
Correct.
So there would have to be a motion by a board member. It's usually a superintendent decision, admin leadership team decision, but we're making a board decision right now. So if we're making a motion to change that, then we'll do that. We'll get a motion, second, we'll discuss.
And just to clarify, you have to have a motion to discuss?
Yes, you'll have to have a motion if we're gonna change it.
I want a motion if I had it all.
Okay, motion made by Scott. Second by Linda. So at this time, we'll let there be a discussion.
My deal is, is we got a short window here. We have a chance for the public to use it before we have to close it back down for construction. So we could use this time to see if they will respect it enough that when we do reopen it after construction, we could leave it open. And we could leave our facility at lock in the day. Open it when the coaches get through, they can unlock that one over there by the concession stand. We got cameras. You can see if it comes in with dogs and whatever.
Can we give them citations if they bring cannibals?
What's the citation going? I don't know what they have, they're from the legal state.
That's what I'm asking. Do they have them pay a fine or?
Or you can put them on Facebook and say, this is why our track is closed now. You can go grab a Tim and say, fuck.
Facebook sells everything.
I'm just, I'm just saying. It takes the pressure off us and you that Joe Close fronting this dog up here and that's the reason it's closed now.
And if they tear it up, we'll say, that's why the budget's messed up. We had to fix it.
I'm just saying, you have a short window here to try.
Sure, sure. And again, again, as I said, you know, I made a recommendation that if the board decides it's open, we're going, again, from my standpoint, you go to what you said. That's what I don't want us to have to do. Because again, our, we've got a fund balance that's right there, pretty close with, or it's more than, it's what it needs to be for us to continue to make sure that if something else happens to TA or legislature and they don't want to fund schools like they need to, that we can continue to take care of our folks. I don't want us, like, keep it locked, not that it guarantees it, but it helps us make the best that we can do to make sure that it doesn't mess up, that if somebody does come do something to it, that we're not having to spend $20,000, $200, whatever, out of fund balance if something is not being budgeted that we would like to be able to use for our students and our teachers. That's my fault in regard to. You know, if it's open and somebody messes up, then yeah, then we just, a million and a half dollars for turf we're now having to repair instead of getting the life out of it, that's what we'd like to. Love for, I'd love for the quality of the turf to be what it is today when your son plays on it as well.
What if, I fully agree with the safety measures. I feel more comfortable knowing my kids that someone just can't be watching them on the truck or out there with them. And I also understand what you're saying. When we were in school, our field got diesel. There was something in the middle of it that I think you even played on. And it happens, and that hasn't happened in however long it's been since I've been in school. And it takes one time for someone to do something that has severe consequences that they're not thinking about.
Well, they were locked in too.
Well, let me, hear me out, hear me out. I'm saying, but, that's why I'm also hesitant to, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm just saying unrestricted access. Could we say, like, yes, it's the community, to bridge the gap between, like, we want the healthy relationship with the community as a school. But there is a level of responsibility. Can we look at community hours? Like, you know, from this time on this, like, it will be open to the community where it's in the day and, you know, I mean...
That's why I say leave it locked here in school when the coaches get through. Lock it after-school hours, it'll be open on weekends, they close it at school hours.
Yeah. I'm just saying too, even like, yeah, even at night when you have someone...
So we have elementary here. Do we have any students that would use it during the day? I would point out the story with...
Yeah, well, she's there.
Yes.
That's my concern. The day would be great, but we're doing all this safety stuff.
Well, that's the thing. You're saying lock it when we're on it. How does that work? I go two in front, two in front, 12 times a day. I'm doing it tomorrow. So, and I don't have a key where I can lock it and unlock it to get onto it.
Well, you can't, if somebody's out there, we can't say, hey, can you leave so we can be key. I mean, you could.
I mean, I can. Why not?
That's not your responsibility.
It's not my responsibility, but...
It's for the...
But I can.
So that's what, that's in a bad spot. The day would be great, but... But you don't have a key there.
I do not have a key. I was told that I couldn't have a key, so I don't know.
So you have a height, it's coming at night, how much illumination are you gonna have? Can a camera show who's there?
You have to have lights on.
Whatever, whatever situation it might be, who's there? Is the camera gonna be good enough to see who it is coming and going tonight?
Well, if you only have the one gate and the cameras are there and the lights are on, you see who came in. Something happened last night. We're gonna know who's there.
We're glad for extra lighting for that to illuminate, or is it?
Well, I've contacted another school district where I'll leave it unnamed. But they leave the lights on until nine o'clock and then they lock the gates and turn the lights on.
Who does it? Because see, I think, I mean, to me...
I contacted Winsborough. That's what Coach King told me to have you in. I contacted two other districts and, which has had turf for a long time. And they probably recommended the other side, so...
Well, my issue, from a, I'm on the outside now, I'm over here, is we come up on the weekends before track starts to work pole vault because they don't work pole vault in track season because they don't know how. So we come up on the weekends to work pole vault and we can't get in.
Have you been trying to do that yet or you won't be?
No, no, but we won't be able to if there's not anything open. There's no access on the weekend for my grandkids to come up. And she should be at the state.
Basketball, ma'am, during basketball season.
Yeah, they did.
Coaches don't allow it.
Coaches come up and let me in, yeah.
On Sunday, yes, yesterday.
Should we do, I mean, do kind of what you're saying?
Coaches were actually here yesterday.
Like stop them for someone to open the track, like certain hours?
I mean, that's what I think, like, you have community hours and then...
Well, at night, we have not makings. Why couldn't we have not ma, who's head of not makings? Could that person not be responsible for coming in, shutting the lights off and locking the gate at a, at a set time?
Would you want?
I mean, I think that would be, I mean, how much, I mean, that would be worth just trying it. And then if something does happen, in my opinion, just discussing it, we can evaluate that. But you're bridging the gap and not just leaving it completely.
So what you're saying is turning the stadium lights off?
But having a set time, you're saying until a certain time. Like, it's not, like, you can't come out at 1:00 AM.
No.
Like, it's serious. Yeah, that's not, there's gotta be some parameters. Because I do feel like we're stewards to make sure, because we will be the ones, if something happens, like you said it, it's going to be, are we gonna fix the turf or kind of teacher? I mean, not real, but that's, that's the reality. That's the reality.
Yeah, we're gonna be talking, you know.
So there's some responsibility that we want to make sure we take care of it. So anyways, just bridging that.
There's gonna be some liability here from the school also, right? If I get hurt, run the winters out there, it could be.
And that, you know, and that could happen, but it was open for years and years and then you have to...
Well, I'm confused with the, they just said it's locked when that happened.
That gate's not gonna keep nobody out if they want to vandalize it.
They're coming in, they're coming in.
I mean, I mean, if somebody wants on that field, they're gonna get on that field. I mean, we're saying that's right, you got it.
Do we pay insurance?
We still don't know. They turn the lights off, got them off.
I still don't think the public, with all this safety, this isn't five years ago or 10. We're having to do all this stuff. We have to go through these safety meetings and all this stuff. Things, things are different. I don't, I'm not comfortable with when elementary or whoever brings their students over there.
Well, I'm not either. I don't have a problem with that.
Most people, or if I look in this room, and I don't know most of these folks, I'd say they'd be okay. There's gonna be some, you know, we get those calls, so-and-so is out in the parking lot. They have had, you know, a record and Max has to go over there and arrest them or their, so what are we, how do we keep them off?
About the days the kids are out there, then you lock them in.
Yeah, I mean, we keep it locked during the day. It's like you said from the very start.
It's not open to the public during school hours.
That's why I was, yeah. That's why I was, no one should be out there.
Okay, so let, we, we're gonna list amend, we'll have to amend and we will list at times. So y'all do. In motion, we would want to say sometimes.
I'm saying, in my motion, that during school hours, don't public people should do this. It should just be school people and kids out there, then after-school hours.
Well, I'm gonna kind of, I would think if it is in use by NBISD students, because I mean, our football players are out there when I pull up. So I'm making sure we're on, like, not after, when you say after-school hours, it's like, oh, you're opening up for... So I'm saying if it is in use by the students, like, they come first, their protection comes first. And then after that, you know, community hours till, I mean, you said nine, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, I just throw it back because that's what Winsborough, like, throws himself into that.
And then I think set hours on the weekend and just, I just don't need to be free all breakfast. So I don't know.
They have to require somebody else to come up on the weekend to open it, to open it. Sit there and wait for three hours or whatever, three hours, so now we're gonna have to somebody to come on the weekend.
We have to, we have to pay somebody to unlock the gate.
I would leave it open on the weekends. I would, I wanna turn on my lights on the weekends. I don't want to turn on my period.
So far, I'm opposed to the public when Matt Vernon is using it. I have opened to the public.
Six to nine, Monday through Friday, at one to four, it's not a new spot in the I S D.
What about when we're having little league games that we charge for? Or having play football? Is it cool if people come up here? We open it up. We're gonna open it up. That's not gonna be, that's not school. That's not our people playing, you know, so you say it's good. Is that good?
We never had a problem with anyone.
We've played their football three years. Brett does a good job.
Last hours, weekend, 6:00 PM.
I just do that.
Tuesday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
This will be, they'll start construction and fence everything off.
That's why we have a short window here to try it out.
We'll have a meeting this, once everything's done, we'll come back.
And you can see how this period goes, it goes little and look at it as a book.
We have that in on the motion. Why don't you just put it that you could open it at a certain time for the public and leave that window open as the camera by the superintendents and see how it's gonna be in your times?
I'm trying to take the superintendent out of it because he made the decision. And Ms. Norwood, he made the decision to pull kids. That's not, you know, the coach is getting blamed for a lot of stuff out here. This comes from the superintendent. I'm throwing him under the bus right here, but, and it probably comes from the board too. We want this stuff tightened up. We spent a million and a half dollars on that field that people want. And most of the people that want the track open, want that track to be in pretty dang good shape for this, this field in eight years when their kids, this Leanne's kids are, are playing up there now. So if I say, hey, I'll vote for this, which I'd like to, to appease the public, all of a sudden, you know, that track, and I don't think this stuff is made to last, but it can be abused or it can be damaged. So I don't wanna, I'm trying not to look at tomorrow. I'm looking, trying to look at five years down the road. The sun's gonna do as much damage to that field as anything is in overtime. But if something happens, I've got now, because hey, if this, if we didn't, if we didn't have a new build out there, we would be talking about this. That track would probably be open. But you know what? I don't know what kind of an example to use here, but if I have a new, brand-new truck, I'm probably not gonna tell a 16-year-old, hey, you can take it up to Rook's and get the door. Rookshir and get the doors, you know, park it up there and get the doors. I'm gonna be more conservative than I am if I have a twenty year old vehicle. So now, I'm, my responsibility is dialing the inboard. I wanna talk about it being safety, but if it, and we are having to dial in more on safety. We have to go, Josh and I and Dr. McCullar have required to go to these new safety meetings since the last school shooting. And things are different, we had to put the new non-scaleable fence in down there when there was nothing wrong with the one we had at the elementary school. And we had, um, you know, we have three officers now that require both state, you know, that you have one per campus. That we can barely afford and we're making it work, cause that's, that's safety, but, so. That's what I have to ask myself, would, would I even be having this conversation if we didn't have a brand new field? I don't know. So there's a two different way in there, so, but that's what I do want. You know, I do, when I see y'all out there here in the day or other people doing stuff, you know, that's what I think, I think the voters. Voted for our students here to have that stuff. Now, the track's always been open, so when you quote something like that in a town like Mount Vernon. Whoever, if I vote nay, I'm the enemy, but I have to also look at the responsibility, so that's what I'm trying to weigh out right here is. How do I, I think it'd be great to do some weekends, do we? You know, it's gonna cost some money to burn the lights that we get from L E D lights, but it's not gonna take that long.
And you could go, what, a month and a half instead of try?
When regarding to the lights, we get, we weren't voting to, our interview conservation plan, two years ago, two years ago. That's going to. Kick that a little bit. If, if we're talking about running the lights Monday through, well, we're talking about seven nights a week, if we're gonna say until nine o'clock. We're opening six to nine Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sundays. And if we're gonna, you're gonna say we want lights Saturday and Sunday, well, somebody.
We've never had lights, I don't know why we need lights on.
I put it earlier in the day.
Okay. Right now, I'm opposed to public when Mount Vernon I S D is using it and open to public six to nine P M, Monday through Friday. And twenty-four hour Saturday and Sunday.
Twenty-four hour Saturday and Sunday?
Our Saturday time, I mean.
I, I'm open, I'm, I'm making nothing good come after midnight. But I'm like, give it up, be all right.
No, I don't love that I would leave it open all weekend, but I, you know, the thing was setting the time, then you can put it out to the public and you can let them know. This is when the track's gonna be open, so this is when you need to plan to go.
So what is that camp Saturday and Sunday?
I don't know. My meeting is not important.
What, it's six to nine? It's why Monday, or Sunday through Monday, six to nine?
P M.
What?
So Saturday, Sunday, it's just six to nine P M?
Well, I was thinking A M. Sorry.
Six A M and not P M, is it?
We're gonna have somebody come up.
Somebody gonna name.
Saturday, Sunday, six A M, eight ninety.
That's gonna involve stopping because you're gonna have two people. It's not much to it, but if I had to come to town and turn the lights on, I'm gonna come and turn them off, you know, there's.
Turn the lights on the weekend.
We're talking about gay, I mean.
Open and close the gates.
We can't set these lights on the timer, I have a figure that we have, we might get into zoo, but these lights we have are different deals.
But we don't, we need lights.
We have to turn the lights on.
And I do agree with Scott, we have a good trial run, we're discussing it now, the public's hearing like, hey, this is why it was shut to begin with. If we kind of act of good faith, like, we need it taken care of and it's respected, like, that's great and bring the school and the community together. But if they don't, it's also like, hey, we talked about it. I just don't know what those agreementers are.
What do you say?
Again, my thought is if you're open a weekend, it is open. Without requiring somebody to come up here.
I don't want that, somebody come up here.
So after the last home game, like on Friday night, those lights flip on, you, you mean, it's unlocked. Friday at whatever time we got down there and it stays that way until Monday mornings at whatever time right now. But it's a specific time though, because we're gonna get hit, we're charging with it, he's gonna get, you know, jumped out of the bus because he didn't do what. We wanted to do or somebody else that, so let's get the specifics here and we'll do it and we can revise. We're gonna have to close it down, it's gonna be a construction zone, once they start construction, we'll, we'll shut it down. And once the, we take fences down and open things back up, we can revise our track schedule. And, I mean, are they good, you know, if you open this up, or is that good for people to come up here and? Fix up on the field, just anybody and everybody? Who's gonna regulate that? I mean, if they wanna come up here and have.
It didn't work.
Well, I thought trash was left and then it's damaged time. Because they tried and they haven't lost. I'm sure every town has their people that will buy about ninety-five percent of the others and they'll have their one or two, just.
We're gonna keep the bathrooms locked up?
Yep.
Cause somebody I talked to kept the bathrooms locked up and it's kind of, I mean, your janitor's gonna be cleaning up toilet paper.
Well, soon it's locked away, man.
Yep, look them in the eyes and tell them that's why it's locked.
So what's our times? You got some times here?
I just want to add, opposed to public when Mount Vernon I S D is using it and open to public six to nine, Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Is that what y'all like?
I'm still, I'm still not, I hate to, I can't, I'm not offering great solutions, I don't know.
It may not pass.
I know, I'm just wondering, I would. I, I, I would feel better with some parameters, even in a weekend.
I've had enough pressure on me to break it open, and that's what I'm doing, if it passes, it's great to tell them, I do what I'm supposed to do.
I'm just trying to find a middle ground here.
But it's hard, I mean, middle ground's hard to find, I mean, you're either gonna leave it open all night during the week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that you were saying Winsboro is six to nine on, on the.
No, they, they just, they close it at nine, nine o'clock to close the gates, lock it and turn the lights on.
Every, every week?
Period, yes, that's what he said. And, and I did not specifically ask for the weekend, did you?
No.
I just asked if there was open and yes, and there, so right now they're leaving the lights on or their lights come on. I think they have a timer to where theirs come on, they don't shut theirs down. I don't think theirs baby wide open, Winsboro.
I think it is too, I think the only time they shut it down is when they clean Mount Vernon.
So, and they have the new lighting, the LEDs, and you can probably have that on timer. And they don't, they're probably complete different system, I'll do something like that, but we're.
So we're talking about trying to stabilize all our security.
So they analyze, we're turning them on, we're gonna back it up, make it safe tonight, I think. I don't know what it costs to, I'll, I'll do here, I don't know what it costs to run those per hour, the LEDs are a lot cheaper and better than what we have, but. So that's about now we have a motion and the second that we open the track.
So I have, so again, only guidelines, I still have to close the public when Mount Vernon I S D is using it, open to public six to nine P M, Monday through Friday and. Unless we're using it on Thursday and Friday and Saturday, and open Saturday and Sunday. So basically, it would be open Friday day, if there's a Friday night game, it'd be open, open after the Friday night games and, um. And all Saturdays, so.
So pretty much we have one more home game, Seattle, after that, that, after all season, we. When they're done with it, open it up Friday and we'll have to figure out stopping for somebody to come up here and. And work, and clean the school and do all this for our place, so we'll have to.
During the weekend, it wouldn't be, the weekend, it wouldn't cost, it shouldn't cost you anything, cause you have night janitors. You have someone that can walk over here or drive a little something and lock it up, why would you have to pay any kind of stopping during the week?
We should already hear that.
There's one gate, I mean, it's just one gate, it's not like you're gonna open all of them.
That, that is my question, just one gate.
Yeah, just one gate, yeah.
One gate, one of the main cameras on the south end, he's coming in and out.
All right, that motion's second. Okay.
And then the weekend, I, I don't like it over the whole weekend, but.
Can we not just say like, ten to nine on the weekend? Just some, some parameters, so it's not a free for all and just see how it goes.
Or ten to six and don't lock.
Yeah.
Then we got, then you.
Then you got to get somebody to come open it off.
You're gonna have, but you can do that anyway.
On the weekend.
You, I mean.
I don't know that I would wanna leave it open all weekend.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Do what?
No, I, I'm saying that lights.
Six to nine. No laps, okay, no laps, so the motion has, right now, I have no laps.
Definitely, well, period, I guess, because.
You're the one without there today.
So we're talking about, yeah, nine hours, somebody's gonna close it? Oh, yeah. Because it's a long field, twenty-four hours.
So again, we're, we're adding something to a budget, whether it's much or not, if we're gonna open it, if you're gonna say open it, then open it. Don't, let's stop trying to nitpick it here on the weekend or Saturday and Sunday, if you're gonna open it, open it.
And all we gotta do is if it doesn't work, we can lock it, right now. I'll come take the trash up first and then I'll shake someone's hand and say, I'm gonna tell you why it's locked.
Saying all three.
They open on a Saturday and Sunday, yeah. Again, we do, we're on, on the, on the, we have somebody higher, we have a janitor that can close that.
So the fact we have non-school hours.
And open or close it on a Saturday, I, I think screwing, I think that's extreme. So if we're gonna open it on weekends, let's.
You could post hours, just ask that they.
Track may open on non-school hours, right?
Isn't it possible to make a lock that's smart, it comes on, I mean, locks and unlocks automatically? The thing's pretty cheap.
I mean, this is just a trial for us.
Yeah.
Something I'm saying, if you, if you respect it enough to deal with this, hopefully. No, we're not talking about this year, I'm talking about a month, we have to have a topic.
But that's a trial.
First time I see a dog owner, I'll be the first one to do it, lock that sucker up still, lock him in there. Lock the door.
So.
Can you not?
Okay.
It is.
No, it's a school hours, that's, uh, is that what I'm hearing?
Not fun with that.
Linda, we can't, I mean, I, I didn't explain any rules or whatever, I'm not supposed to interact with the public here, so I have all, I mean, I'd love to get all of. I'm sure everybody has the same opinion, but we have to keep it between the seven and so. Give me something to go with here, now.
I have a motion, what I have written down is a motion to open the track, but to close the public when Mount Vernon I S D is using it. And open it to public six to nine P M, Monday through Friday, we'll have one of our night custodians close the gate on the south end by the gym and it's open all day Saturday and Sunday.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. Motion made by Scott, second by Kyle. Any further discussion?
Second by Linda, second by Linda.
Oh, that's second by Linda, that's right, sorry about that. Made by Scott, second by Linda, all four? Four, opposed, three, motion passed, the track's open. Next item of business, good discussion, thanks for that discussion. Uh, consider resolution nominating candidates for the Franklin County Appraisal District Board of Directors twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so, um, it's that time of the year again, these have to be returned by the fifteenth. Uh, currently, the board members are Roger Jakir, Jay Scott, Scott Lee, Austin Prairie, and Ralph Robertson. It is my understanding that Jay Scott is wanting to come off as well as Scott Lee. And so, I think what I have, uh, what I've been told by the board is Roger Jakir, Austin Prairie, Ralph Robertson, Chad Wooton, and Mike Ramblin. Would be the possible nominees for Mount Vernon I S D. That's the current board members, so the only change would be, would be Scott Lee coming off and Jay Scott. And adding from the Mount Vernon I S D to nominate Chad Wooton and Mike Ramblin, we have to put a lot in the nomination.
Any questions on that? So, okay, so we had Mr. Ramblin. Okay. And then at this time, I need a motion. That for the candidates for Franklin County Appraisal District Board of Directors twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five will be. Roger Jakir, Austin Prairie, Ralph Robertson, Chad Wooton, and Mike Ramblin. Any further discussion, or Nadia's second on that? I made the motion and Scott's second, now it's looking for discussions. All four? Seven minutes. And run the totals under information.
All right, we are, we're still up from, um, the last one, so it's a little bit lower than we were last year. Currently at fifteen sixty-nine, um, I'm not sure, Julia talked to our week, talked to her today, our attendance today was like ninety-two percent. I don't know if it was because it was Columbus Day or whatever it was, holiday for some folks, but, um, our attendance has been running a little over ninety-six percent. So it's been, it was, let's go with what we need, but the goal is good, fifteen sixty-nine is where we are currently right now.
Okay. Can I put that page? Ms. Lewis.
And I wanted to highlight a project that our gifted and talented kids are working on and they just finished up. And they were given a budget of thirty-five hundred dollars and they had to come up with and create a business plan for a food truck. And so, in the creation of that plan, they considered so many variables. And they made it, they did the marketing and advertising for their food trucks and then. At the culmination, we had the food truck go on campus and they got to eat some tacos, so. Just wanted to brag on them, um, our attendance is, we are maintaining the ninety-seven percent attendance rate at this time. Uh, we did have, uh, a lot more kids absent today, but there is a bomb of stomach virus around here. Uh, the first six weeks, we had three hundred and fifty-six students with perfect attendance, that's more than fifty percent of our total population on our campus. Uh, this year, we opted to try something new instead of the usual like big Kahuna fundraiser, we did the adventure fun run. And we met our fundraising goal, which is gonna help provide, uh, we're gonna do a few like playground updates, or a little bit of safety. Things that we're gonna fix, uh, it's gonna help with the cost of field trips. And our positive behavior incentives that we do for the campus and overall just help build our culture. Uh, what we really liked and the positive feedback that we got was that every student was able to participate in it, so it wasn't just those that, that raised the money. Um, for community engagement, uh, we had our dyslexia meeting. And, and we had more parents attend that than, than we've had in the past, so that, that was great. And tomorrow we'll ha- we'll host D A D N A. And so, um, it's always a, a favorite and we're expecting a, a pretty large turnout tomorrow. Uh, our P T A is becoming more involved and, and we're getting an increase in numbers. Uh, they were able to get outside donors and pay for all of our students and, and our teachers a class T-shirt, so that was great. Uh, we're gonna host.
PTA did that? PTA guy?
PTA, yes, sir. And we're going to host the Elementary UIL January twelfth. Yes, that's a very large undertaking, but we're excited about being able to do that for the kids, and really using that as an opportunity to showcase our campus. We're really proud of our facility, so we're excited to be able to do that on that January twelfth date when our students are out of school. We're continuing monitoring instruction. There are common unit assessments and working to maintain and grow our student performance. We just had our six weeks RTI meetings, and so we're adjusting that and providing the timely intervention that our students need. This Friday, we're going to have our Blue Day, our PD Friday, and we'll, the first thing we'll be doing is conducting our campus needs assessment as a campus, and we'll use, I'll use that data, and as a committee, we'll use that to inform our campus improvement plan, which I'll present to you in November. And our teachers, this is what I'm most excited about, they're going to be, they're going to be participating in staff-led breakout sessions. So our teachers, our very own teacher leaders are the ones that are going to be leading this, and it's going to provide choice for our teachers to be able to attend, kind of have some personalized ownership of what they want to grow in. Thank you.
Ms. Water, do you have something? Anything going on in middle school?
Nothing. No, we have several things going on. We have, we have not quite the attendance we had before. The attendance has gone down a little bit, we're at ninety-five percent due to stomach issues, vomiting, things that the kids just had little viruses going around, so it has brought us down just a little bit. We've had picture day today, in which Ms. Bates, Ms. Walker processed every student on the campus in an hour and fifteen minutes, so did a really good job in that area. We have a lot of targeted interventions going on amongst the teachers individually, both before school, after school, and in the classroom, and we also have our interventionists still working on those areas to make sure that we're getting our kids where we need them to be. UIL practices and preparation for our December meet, you know, feel very challenged this year because we did so well last year, that we're really working hard, and the teachers are really working hard, and the kids are just really finding, really loving doing it. I had a student tell me recently that they're going to come home with four medals this time. We've had some very successful behavior parties, we were a little worried because we didn't have the ability to do it during a leak like we've done before, or to take a half a day, and we still made it just a really good, successful time for the kids where they felt like they received an honor for, you know, staying in that good behavior category. We really had a great time with the staff preparing for the STAR test questions, in that they worked really hard on trying to figure out the new STAR test questions and what they need to do, what they need to do differently. And so we're doing extra professional development in that area to try to determine exactly what the state's wanting and making those changes for the kids so that they're well-prepared for it. And then we have Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week coming up, in which we're going to have competitions for the kids to compete, and then of course, looking at our attendance, right now, we have a hundred and eighty-one students with perfect attendance through this time, hoping that the numbers stay up and that we can continue having good success there, and just keep the little bugs away.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On someone from Court Card, he had an absent in engineering, but he was here. There was some kind of program or something that said you all had to put it in there?
No, sir, if they're, if they're in class...
He was at school during engineering, he has an absent in there.
Okay. I'd have to check the date, could be anything from he wasn't there when first, class first started, and it just needed to be corrected, it hasn't been corrected yet, depending on what the date was.
A lot of Billy called him and asked, and she said they were, some kind of program was going on, and that's...
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about, where we had the speaker come up and talk. Okay, so I'll have them look into that and correct that.
I don't know how, how that works, so...
Normally, we still have, they still do attendance before they go, so if they're late or anything, then they would be counted absent, and then the teacher would see that they came back, and they could have been an oversight, and I'll make sure they can look into it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Scott, I think it's more likely that the attendance person on the campus just messed up. He thought he was in class. I'm telling you something.
If he was in high school, I would, I'd say maybe he skipped or something. He can't drive.
All right, for high school, so for the first six weeks, we've kind of been working on a campus instructional focus, and we're going to try to do this throughout the school year, have something new for each time period, but the first six weeks, it's been really focusing on the last ten minutes of class, because you know we've went this year to longer class periods, we've got fifty-seven minute class periods as opposed to forty-five, which is a big change, you know, with the forty school week and all that, so we're really trying to make sure that we maximize instructional time and really focus in on what we're doing those...
Forrest, we need back into open session. Dr. McCullough, do we have any resignations?
We have First United's Professional Contracts, make a recommendation for Maria Rodriguez as a second grade teacher, and Maria Reyna as a pre-k teacher.
Reyna?
Yes.
Okay. Need action on that?
Please.
Make a motion that we hire Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Reyna. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Linda, all four, seven to zero. Resignations?
Acknowledge the resignations of Lynn Christenberry as Marilla Aguilar, Jeremy Glossop, James Evanson, and Cynthia Jocelyn.
Any further business?
No, sir.
Manny Jared.
Thank you very much.
Matt Tean. Nine ten.